Yep, it is. Yeah, okay. Good evening, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled Chandler Town Council meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Cheryl Lemus.
Here.
Tom Burnett.
Here.
Sandy Yilder. Tanya Wester.
Here.
Ron Willidge.
Here.
Okay, just for clarification, Sandy was called out of town. And she's trying to get her video on and state mandate states that she can join the meeting in video, but we have to be able to see her picture. So right now she's just listening. And she's trying to get her video on. So at this point, Tom, she's not actually joined the meeting to be able to vote. Okay, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Front of us tonight, we have the July fifteenth council meeting minutes. Any questions, concerns, changes that are to happen?
I didn't say anything.
Start saying Ron, that's usually your.
Well, I'm.
Your call.
I'm reading pretty close, I didn't say anything.
I didn't say anything. Okay, then at this point, I'd like to entertain motions to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Meeting minutes pass as presented. And we have comments from citizens on the agenda, we have Mary Stanley from Heimridge. Okay, then we're going to move on down to the Lions Club, new officers and Celebration Day. I'll turn that over then, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up to Tammy Osha, who I believe is the president now of the Lions Club.
I think most of you know me, but for those that don't, I'm Tammy Osha and I'm the new president for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the Chandler Lions Club.
And I'm Jennifer Young, I'm the vice president for the twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five.
And then this is Sarah Nord and she's our Celebration Day committee chairperson. So we just kind of wanted to introduce ourselves. Thank you guys for everything that you've done over the years working with us. We are trying to grow our club even bigger. We've, we had thirteen new members last year, so we're looking for more new members if anybody wants to come join us. We meet every Saturday of the month at the community center at six thirty. We would just like to have new faces and new people to help. We are willing to help and want to help organizations, the town, the police department, you know, anything that's happening in town. We've really enjoyed the Easter egg hunt last year helping out, so we'd like to get involved with things like that. I know Ron is part of our organization and, you know, he's helped us out several times and helped you guys out. I have a little list to make sure I wanted to do everything. And I think the rest is Tara, and she's got a bunch of information. We've grown this Celebration Day, she's grown it a lot from last year. So we've got a lot of our agenda this year, we have a couple of things that we might ask for your help with. And we'll get to those as she goes through her list.
Okay, so this year, I know it's been a while since I noticed that they were like, they gave. Okay, so anyway, we have awards that we're going to be giving out this year, we've got a sponsor to do awards, we're going to have top ten, top ten people in the parade. And then we'll have a first, second, third, we do have some judges that we've picked out that's going to do that. We're going to have a petting zoo, pony rides for the kids. Free, yes, everything is, everything is free. We were going to have, so far about four, I think we cannot get any more vendor spots, we have forty-seven. We have forty-seven vendors that are going to be participating in the parade. We have to keep, I think I go over there like every other day and measure to make sure we've got that. But we had tried to do face painting, we cannot secure anybody that can do face painting because of course, you know, it's something that we can't, you know, spend a lot of money on it to get a sponsor and they are really expensive. So if anybody knows of a face painter that would be willing to volunteer or something, we're open to that. Just right before I came, I got an email, we have fifty parade participants already this year. And we have branched out and instead of just mainly getting like a lot of people like from Chandler, we've got, of course, the Chandler Fire Department. But then we have Boonville, Yankee Town, Ohio Township, and then the Newburg Fire, which I thought they were the same, but they are not. We have Stat Flight going to be landing this year and work EMTs are supposed to be there with information. There's a couple, I got about three other things I haven't posted, we have a Facebook event page, there's about three things on there I haven't posted yet. I try to make it like, make announcements to try to get more people involved and then watch the page to see what, you know, that we're going to add. So can't tell what those are going to be yet. We're going to have a wacky tacky auction, different items, it's, people have donated. It's going to be, you know, like a dollar ticket, you know, different product, different things like that. We're going to have inflatables for the kids, which are free again as well. Bingo will be back this year and, I believe that's it.
And the theme for the parade is wacky tacky.
Oh yeah. And if, if no one knows what wacky tacky is, Ron, stand up.
You want me to come out there?
Yeah, that'd be good. And we did not tell him to do this.
You say camouflage.
Camouflage.
And you're playing duckie hole together?
There we go.
On wacky tacky.
All right, that's all I can think of.
Do you guys have any questions about what we're doing?
I think it's great.
Any suggestions on how to get the word out so that the community knows and they're, you know, more interested or that, you know, we have forty-seven vendors, we need people over there.
Have you thought about a flyer to go out to the schools, because I know that has to be.
I think we did that last year.
Yeah, that's all we did.
Now, I got ahold of Misty last month and they had it put on the water bill. But it's kind of small, so I'm going to have to get her and see if she'll, some way get it bigger on there. I had asked her if, I didn't know how you, how the water bills came out, I don't know. I didn't know if you guys stuffed the envelopes here or what, but I was thinking, I don't, I don't know, so.
I just can't imagine sending those on. Sorry.
But anyway, I was thinking, how could we, could we add a flyer in that, because I thought about bulk mailing and I, there was.
So we also have a, the text men, we have the text message ability that goes to all the water customers that are signed up for it. So that's a part of something that we can utilize, we pay for it as a yearly service. Because you choose when you sign up that, because text message, email, or you can do both, I think mine comes out into both, honestly.
Comes in both.
Okay, so then it's, you know, just like a mass thing that you're really not doing anything for, there's no extra thing to it, just.
Yeah.
And you can even, we can even do, because I think it's the most underutilized thing we have, because, you know, we could use it more. Maybe we can even do like leading up to it, like maybe a few, like a week or so leading up to it, do something each day or, or, you know, a couple of weeks leading up to it that way.
That'd be great.
You know, something like that, so you might want to get with Misty. Because she's one of the ones that can send that out. And it's pretty instantaneous and it just goes, and it may even, we could even set it where it could go out to everyone, like it's actually Chandler Utilities, which is a lot of people out there outside the town limits.
Yeah, I know, that was one thing is. Oh, I'm sorry. The advert, I guess people have seen that, we have the banners coming in town, going each way, coming in and then coming in down here. I think we're going to get, the sheriff's department is going to give us one of their digital signs.
Okay.
And L and V is going to put it on the sign out here.
I was going to say, Donna back there, get a L and V sign.
Yep.
So those are the things I can think of off the top of my head.
I think your face, different faces are doing good. I think, because I, I, I do, I monitor those all the time.
But that's one thing I wanted to get back at was, I know that there was some places, because like I said, I've got still probably, oh gosh, several, I mean, basically that's what I do every day when I come home, is get on and keep calling people, hey, you want to be in the parade, you want to be in the parade? And people I'm following up on. We have branched out, I mean, some people think Chandler Celebration Day is Chandler, you know, why are you getting people like, like the other, other fire departments? Sometimes they help us here. Why are you getting businesses from Evansville?
They have services.
They service people here in Chandler, so, you know, and like I said, a lot of them have been very, you know, willing to help and want to come be in and stuff like that, so. So we're just hoping to get it bigger, I remember when I was a kid how big it was, I want to get, I'd really love to get it back.
Get a nice one again, be great.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
If you guys are doing good though.
I remember when it was at the elementary school and there was rides and it was one day.
It used to be at the park.
It was white.
I'm not, it was black, now I'm a little age, they put the black plastic around the shelter house and do music, but you had to be, I forget, fifteen years old or something stupid.
Yeah.
To go to it, you know, I would never own a.
Yeah.
We're not that old.
They had rides and everything, it was, it was great.
They're tranquil.
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions and I think Misty was working on one, and that was electrical sockets outside.
Okay.
Not all of them work. We went over and tested them and not all of them were working, we didn't know if we could, if there was a status of getting those fixed, because we do have several vendors that wanted electricity.
Okay, so that part, I do not know, Tyler, has she talked to you any on that? And she is actually in Indianapolis for the week, but I will talk to her and find out if she's had anyone come look at them and what the status is on that and let you know this week. Okay.
I know a few years ago, I mean, this is, you all, I know Tony got a bigger, more industrial type generator.
We're going to use that for the bounce houses.
When they had the bounce house and the blow up.
Yeah.
These are just some of the vendors that need smaller.
Yeah.
You know, well, our car wouldn't do be enough to do that.
Yeah, it'll be enough, just as long as, like I said, you know, if they, if they got those fixed, it would be great, so.
Okay.
The other one was for, for, we need police to block off the streets. I didn't know if that is a possibility, like.
I've already planned on that.
Okay. Okay.
We'll have, have offers at the manuans and I'll see if the county can help us, we don't have enough to cover everything that we have.
Okay.
And last year we blocked off Washington so that the parade had to come through.
Yeah, I think they've stopped.
So they didn't just go on up to.
We'll definitely have a car there.
That'd be great. Keep them as long as we can keep them.
Yeah.
And then before you sit down, I've talked to Tammy a little bit, Marva Essex, who is Jean Essex's daughter, had, there's some conversation going on about establishing a Jean Essex, what was it called?
Lifetime Service Award.
Service Award. So they would like, the Essex, you know, Jean, most of, a lot of people may not know, but Jean was one of the ones, along with Tammy's dad, that actually fought for us to have the community center to begin with. And they would like to establish that and they would like to pay for that, they would like to put a memorial, not a, you know, a plaque or something in reference to her, their mother up there and then start a yearly service and they would like to go ahead and pay for that upfront to the Lions Club. The Lions Club would handle it, but we just need to make sure that the council's good with putting it up.
I think that's fantastic, Jean was huge in our town.
I didn't think it would be a problem and then, you know, she will get you, she actually messaged me back and said that they have a set amount idea for every, for the five years and I thought, well, that's probably a lot more than what it's going to cost to actually do, so.
And then I think we had talked about possibly someone from the town presenting that to them at Chandler Days.
Okay.
Our Celebration Day, so if you guys could do that, we would appreciate that.
Sure. We'll have the award ceremony after the parade for the participants and then we figured we could do it all at one time.
It's too bad Marva or Gina aren't in town anymore.
Marva is in town and Gina is in town for a few more weeks.
Yeah.
But they will both be there for the Celebration Day.
Yeah. They was going to come back.
Maybe they can present it for the first year especially.
So. Okay.
Well, it's being presented.
Well, this year is establishment evidence, so twenty twenty-five, it starts starting in twenty-five. So it'll start next year.
Okay, got it.
So.
Awesome.
Okay. All right. Thank you ladies, thank you for all your hard work. Then we're going to move on down, Sarah Eller, sign orders.
Hello. How are you guys doing?
Good.
So I had a message relayed that, so I have two campaign signs in my yard, one in the front and one in the back. And I was relayed that that is in violation of the sign orders you guys have. When I read through this, it's a little confusing, so like the first kind of blanket statement is saying that no more than two signs at any time per quarter acre. And then there's like all these kind of sub chapters, so I guess.
We're going to refer to him, we're going to refer to Josh.
Sure, so how, how large is your, is your, is your lot?
It's less than a quarter acre, it's six thousand square feet. And so I have two signs right now on that.
Okay, I see, so first I'll say this, Chandler, like most, well, most municipalities should, does not regulate signs based on what they say. So as a government, we can't say, well, you get your church sign up, but you can't have your business sign up or your business versus your church or vice versa, right? So none of this has anything to do with what is said. The second thing I want to make clear, I think this is probably obvious, but it's worth underscoring, that I know Michael, I know the town is applying all of these evenly, no matter what person or business or organization it is. So with that said, everyone is allowed a temporary sign at any given time. And the intent for that is, let's say you're having a garage sale or you're having a realtor put a sign up because the house is for sale. That can be at any given time. But sixty days before an election and sixty days after an election, that one sign rule goes away and you can have lots, right? And the idea is, again, we can't say it's election sign because then we're regulating the content. But we all know that the purpose really is around election time to make sure people that are allowed to have more than just the typical one temporary sign. So the two things I have to your scenario are, one, it sounds like you have two signs out. And I don't even know when the sixty days before the election begins.
It'll be September, won't it? Because it's November, so.
Usually, I mean, the rule is typically people wait till Labor Day and that's sort of when the signs go out. But I don't know exactly when that falls, so I'd have to do the math, but sixty days before. The other thing I would say is temporary is certainly not more than sixty days. So if you have a sign out now and it lasts through the election, that's going to be in violation too. So, and again, please don't think this is targeting you, it's not, I mean, this is everybody and it's, and I know because Michael has raised questions like this with me throughout the year and before that on other people and issues, so. What is that, September?
I think it's seventh of September.
Your name or your talking.
Yeah, so that's, that's the idea, so come, assuming it's sixty days before September seventh, come September seventh, you have all the signs you want.
So right now it's restricted to one, but it's.
But if you have for one now, that means you're going to have to take it down before the election, right? Because that's not, that's not temporary, you're keeping it up for seventy, eighty days. You see what I mean?
So with the election, what it says is for a period of sixty days prior to an election involving candidates, and election is in lowercase. Here in Indiana, we have a twenty-eight day before that early voting starts. So election is kind of a period of time when people are casting votes, so we have people, some people vote on October eighth and some people do it all the way to November fifth, so sixty days, I did calculate before then, that's actually August eighth, which is Friday. So that was kind of another question I have.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, I, I mean, I think, I can tell you that the intent was election day. And that's how this has been interpreted elsewhere, but I mean, I'll say that's a fair point that we can, we can certainly go back and add some clarity.
I would assume that if you mean election day to be in all caps, then I would say election day, because that is very precise and specific, whereas elections kind of general. I mean, if we just had a one day election, then, you know, that date would seem valid to me, so.
But my question on that, that actually raises a good question, on that is, that sixty days would still be the case? And if you, what was the date you said?
August eighth.
Yeah, so I mean.
Sixty days from that would be. But sixty, but sixty days prior before that or after that would still be before the election ends.
Yeah.
Since September, October, that you would have to take it down or we would have to take them down in October then.
But what it's, what.
But then, but she's going to say it's sixty days after as well.
Yeah, that's what it says, sixty days after, sixty days before, and to me, I kind of interpret election as that, just that twenty-eight period of day, because I can't control when a person goes and votes, I can't say, well, you have to wait for election days.
Well, in all fairness, this, this ordinance was drafted before there was early voting. So at the time this ordinance was drafted, there was only, there was only one election day, that was it. So that was the intent.
Away absentee voting.
Yeah, absentee voting, but it wasn't.
They've kind of complicated that, so that kind of makes it more complicated.
And I don't think following, I mean, you may disagree, I don't, I don't think following the intent that everybody else is following is going to alter the outcome, right? I don't think your one sign, you know, waiting till it's Labor Day, like everybody else is going to alter the outcome, but that's certainly the intent and the reason behind it.
Well, I probably wouldn't go on your time story if I would have, you know, like, I actually didn't run across this ordinance, it is on your public webpage now, but I think there would, like, I couldn't find it before, I had to look down in planning and zoning, I did actually go through all the ordinances before I ordered my signs and then, like when, when it was pointed out and I'm going to look for it, it was under planning and zoning and then it was under zoning forms. And so then it was just kind of tucked away, but I think that has been resolved since.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I don't know where it is, I confess I've not looked at it on the website, but I always check, we have online, there's a link to the full municipal code.
Yeah, because I honestly, I've never looked on the web, our website, at any of our ordinances, I always just go.
And then also, just, and this isn't just for you, this is for everybody, I mean, there are also copies here in the front office, Michael has copies of the full code as well, so. But, but yeah, I think, I mean, so that's the whole, I mean, temporary signs, I mean, again, you, again, it's, sometimes you'll have people come out and work on your HVAC system and they have to sign out briefly, or you have a church social, you know, you have a yard sign. The, the intent is to avoid visual pollution, as they say, so if somebody doesn't have ten signs out, certainly don't have ten signs out for half the year. You know, that at any given time, we recognize you made it a temporary sign, but then, understanding election time, that's not enough, around the election time, all bets are off, you can have twenty if you want, you know what I mean, that's the idea.
Yeah, and I do want to, one of my neighbors who lives down has had a town council sign out since before the primary, nobody's said anything there, so I just.
Well, that's good to know, I would assume then that's because we didn't know about it, yeah, so.
It's like in her backyard, you can kind of see it from Heimridge.
Well, I suspect somebody will, will say something to her now.
So to be clear, are we okay with August ninth to start putting signs out?
Well, I mean, I go back to the intent, I mean, the, the intent was sixty days before election day. And I think that's how it has been interpreted and I, and I, I mean, I think that's how it will be enforced as well.
I think it's something we need to maybe look at.
I mean, again, that's the town council's decision, I shouldn't say that, but.
And maybe you'll see, you'll have to go to APC first with Michael.
Well.
Well, if you got to change the ordinance.
Well, this is, I, let's just say, I, I think it's a fair point that we now have early election, early voting, so I think that's something we can clarify. How it's, how it's enforced, I mean, we'll huddle up here and let everybody know. Sure.
Ironically, the state's not changed theirs, their idea of where you can restrict. Because the state's actually not changing theirs, theirs says, our, this is actually mirrors what the state says.
Well, but it says you can, a town can restrict, but.
Yeah, but I mean, but they've not actually opened that up where it requires them to go for that, I mean, I'm just saying that that's where that came from. And it's, that ordinance has probably been in for twenty or thirty years.
It was twenty eighteen.
No.
Well, I think.
Well, everything was updated in twenty eighteen, so last watch was twenty eighteen, but it was probably.
Some of the concepts have been in there for a while.
Yeah.
It's been there for a while.
Okay. Probably twenty or thirty years is how long the concept's probably been in there, if you go back and find the old ones.
And one final question, just.
Yes, sure.
But, um, public, I know it's, it said that you guys can kind of, it's up to your discretion, are you guys going to open it like signs up once that period comes in for people to put it in the public, in public areas?
Right of ways, we don't generally put them in right of ways.
I'm not in favor of that.
And just for clarification, the state owns everything on the side of the highway.
Yeah, and, and I think, and then there are many reasons for that, but a big one is when they get in there, it, it does impede the sight of view when you're trying to turn a lot of times or what's coming along. And in particular, I don't know, it is here, I, in Evansville, it's gotten really a bit bad where people are making these huge signs that are like six feet tall and you put them in the right of ways, it gets to be a problem, yeah. Plus, plus, I mean, the towns, or whoever it is, I shouldn't say the town, but whoever is in charge of maintaining that, you know, that becomes a problem if they're using a particular type of lawnmower, et cetera. I mean, there's just a lot of reasons where.
That makes sense.
That's not, yeah, typically allowed.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, thanks for asking good questions.
I guess this is sort of related, but I'll just say this too, there are some homeowners associations that assert or try and say that you cannot have political signs. I will tell you, there is a, there is a good court case that says that is unconstitutional. So if you live in a homeowners association, you want to put a sign out, I mean, certainly towns can limit the size, the material and the timing of that in some way, but they can say no altogether, so, there you go.
And I, and I saw arguments too about content base, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was.
And Michael, just for clarification, doesn't those subdivisions out on Heim, don't they, or at least one of them have some covenances in there that?
There are some covenances.
I don't know what they are.
I have a copy of them.
I don't know.
Yeah, that might be something.
I want to look at that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I don't know what they are, just know that there are some covenances, because I've heard it before about other things. And there, that has nothing to do with anything we've ever done this way before they ever came into the town.
All right, thank you very much.
So, all right, moving on down to the town attorney.
Okay, we have the Third Amendment to agreement with Ohio Township, I'll pass this down. This effectively really just keeps in exactly what we have with Ohio Township and extends it through twenty twenty-five. You know, I don't know that it makes sense to do that this time, but I think we have some firefighter personnel that are here. I mean, at some point, I think it makes sense for the town to do a pretty comprehensive review or discussion about sort of the particular costs that are involved. I mean, I feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, this hasn't really been addressed in a long time. And that's above my pay grade to know if it's appropriate or not, I just don't know, but I, I think it makes sense for the town folks to look at that.
Like, some of the things that would be good to have would be, what are the number of runs that are going on in this area? The types of runs, the costs that, you know, like some costs that you guys see from it, because I know there's no per run cost that you guys can, that you guys actually recover, anything like that. But that would be all good information to have before twenty twenty-five.
And I, and I don't mean to open up a can of worms, because again, I mean, obviously it's up to you, but I think it probably makes sense to go forward with another year, but I think it's some, you know, probably by the next time you want to rein that in and might as well start having those discussions now with Chad.
Yeah, we have a lot of data, we can just start.
Just bringing the data together.
Yeah, we can, we can get that together the next few months.
Okay. Then, any questions or thoughts, concerns? I don't think this is, I mean, this is not relating to any charge, it's just they're the same. And currently, it's covered, they cover the cost for, you know, the maintenance of the equipment, the fuel, the, it's just built more along the lines of the labor.
Correct, yeah, they're covering costs of their trucks, and they have an engine, two brush trucks, a squad that's in our station, and they're covering all those costs. And then I think we get an extra four thousand or five thousand dollars a year from the company. Certain things, I'd, you know, we can spend that kind of out of the meat too. But that's what they're covering right now.
Okay. All right, then, if there's nothing else on it, entertain motions to accept this amendment to the agreement, the reference to firefighting services of Ohio Township between Ohio Township and the town chairman.
Can I make that motion?
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna sign this one, and then I'll pass the rest of it down.
Um, I guess I'll just say this too. I mean, we've certainly been busy fielding a lot of questions from different department heads on various things. Um, as it relates to the, uh, new fire station, um, I know that they're shopping rates, um, right now with various banks. I'll, I'll tell you, I'll just be frank, I've, I'm a little disappointed with how slow it's taken them, 'cause I expected a lot of that like a month or two ago, but it's happening, and I'll tell you, with the markets doing what they are, effectively crashing, uh, it looks like the Fed is gonna be lowering rates, so the delay may actually work in our favor. Um, now, I don't know, I mean, you guys know as much as I do what's in the news, uh, but if, if the Fed's lower it, I think they react pretty quickly, so that could be beneficial. Tyler's group just continues to do a great job with all of their stuff, uh, that they've got going on. We've had some easement issues that I think we've finally gotten, um, clean, cleaned up. And, uh, Tyler, I think, I haven't had a chance to tell you, but I'm still waiting for Scott on, on his testimony, and once we have that, we'll be ready to rock and roll on that, so, yep.
Okay. All right, then we'll move, that's all done, we'll move to the police chief.
Melody is gonna be on her own starting, that's mostly today, um, so that gives us six full-time, uh, column will be starting plainclothes phase Wednesday. So hopefully he can get through that and get on the road, and then we'll start looking the car the other, R eight.
Okay.
Our new car finally is on the road. Seems like it doesn't matter how early you order stuff. It takes a while to get it all put together, but it finally got on the road, uh, this last week, last Friday, Friday.
And, you're right on that, because that is why, once again, this is not being livestreamed, because we have a backorder on the equipment needed to be able to do it. Yes.
Can I just make a comment, please?
Well, generally, you have to be on the agenda. I'm not sure what you're, what, it's just a, I guess, a congratulations or a thank you. Oh, sure. I mean, you're wanting to say something. I didn't know you had something you needed today, Barbara, not.
No, I just wanted. First of all, I'm Barbara Hasselbrink, and I go to Chandler, Cumberland Presbyterian Church. So about a month and a half ago, maybe, I called, uh, nine-one-one because at Chandler, we had, at the church, we had a homeless man sleeping in our doorway. And thank God, Mr.
T-Ball.
Was there. He handled the man very well. Uh, the man was having mental issues. And I appreciate how he handled the situation. My question to you is if all of your, uh, police officers are trained in any kind of mental health, uh, education? Because you hear about so much in the news about they just cheat, or they talk, and the way you handled it, care of him, I appreciate that, because that's the one thing that I called and said, I want help, not, you know, a force. I just, he needed mental health, and, uh, I really appreciate you doing that. My other question is, we have a food bank. We are busy every Tuesday. And we do Warwick County. We don't just do Chandler. We do all of Warwick County. So if you know of somebody that is homeless and that is needing food, please don't hesitate to call us, because we will feed them. The other thing is, is homeless in Chandler is becoming a, a problem. I don't know if you know that, but we have people living at the library. Of course, we've had them at our church. I know they're out in the woods. So it's just something to think about, what we can do to help these people. Because when I tried to look for a mental health place to help this person, there was nothing that you could find. So I've talked to, um, with us being in food bank, we talked to several different food bank places. And, uh, unfortunately, this person goes to different ones, and, you know, uh, so it's not just here. It goes to Chandler, I mean, it goes to Boonville, and so I just wanted to be aware of that, and that, thank Mr. T-Ball for doing, for doing his job. I really appreciate that. That's what I was here for.
That's okay. Well, thank you for bringing that. It's always good to hear good things about our officers, 'cause they do put in a whole lot of work, and they have been putting in a whole lot of hours, including Kirk told me that he had a six-day, twelve-hour run that he just did, and it's very much appreciated. But, and then, um, yeah, our officers all seem to do pretty well with that sort of stuff. And yes, you are correct, as a whole, homelessness is going up with the cost of everything.
It's just a thought.
It is, it is very difficult to meet those needs when, in a place that, I mean, with a budget like the town has. But it would behoove us to maybe get together some service information to have, for folks to have, and to distribute and get, you know, help with those sorts of things.
We, we do have, um, unfortunately, there's not much in Warwick County.
Okay, you guys. There's not, there's your friend.
Have to try to get them there.
You are absolutely correct. Um, for the most part, Warwick County's not had a whole lot in the last few years. But it is, I've seen them, so, hey, thank you. All right. Um, fire chief.
I got a couple things for you guys. Um, I'm sorry, I'll send you an email, so.
You're failed.
I know. I'm terrible. Well, this kind of happened over the weekend a little bit too, so. Um, we did order new hoses for the town engine after all of our hoses failed, so, uh, that will be coming in about every month, hopefully. Uh, so we'll have all new attack, uh, and other stuff, so. We were looking at our budget this year, our lit money, what we have left. Uh, we think the best use of that lit money that we have left this year would be to replace Rescue Twenty-three, and we wanted to hear guys' thoughts on that. Uh, we have a couple trucks in mind we've been looking at, and that, uh, we think we'd do a good job replacing that truck. We think we can do it for around a hundred thousand dollars. I believe we have a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on current lit money this year. We got a lot of stuff, not knowing what was gonna happen with the station and everything like that, so. If you guys are okay with us pursuing it, then.
So, why don't you explain what Twenty-three is and the age of Twenty-three? That helps some.
So Twenty-three is in nineteen eighty-seven, I believe, nineteen eighty-six, uh, rescue squad. So it doesn't have any water on it, it doesn't have a pump, so we use it for, uh, supply hose, so it has a thousand quid of, uh, that five-inch U-Dil hydrants, and that, we can make that go our engine or whatever. It's our first or second new truck almost every month around we have in town. It has all, a ton of our auto extrication equipment. Um, it has all the new electronic auto extrication tools that we purchased last year on it. A bunch of the cribbing and struts and everything you need to, uh, safely extricate someone from vehicle. Uh, so it's our, it goes on almost every direct pickup as well. So that truck runs a lot, how old it is, um, it's been doing a really good job for us, and we've identified the need for that truck to have water on it. And we think that having a truck that has water in, rest of capabilities, would be a really good asset to the department. Did I explain it well about that?
That, okay.
So, I think that, uh, we, we think that truck will, getting replaced with, the truck has pumping capabilities, water, and all that rest of the capability would be a, uh, a good asset to the department. Right now, it just doesn't have water on it. It can't use it for really anything that we would need it for, water pumps, so.
And then, what are the trucks that you were looking at?
So I, I can get you guys some more information. We just have a couple that we just kind of looked at. Um, one is a, uh, a rescue pumper. It's up in, um, Bloomington right now for sale, so, uh, and it'll do everything I just described. Um, I can see you guys some more information on that truck. So there's another one out of, like, Vermont that we looked at. Um, there's a lot of logistical challenges to get that, that truck to us. So it'll kind of look something closer. Um, and it's an actual full rescue body, like, it's a big truck. So we're trying to go with something a little bit smaller, something same, kind of size.
Similar to what you already had.
Similar to the, the rescue, it's a rescue truck that we already have, but it has water and a pump and everything on it, so.
So what years of those trucks you're looking at?
Uh, the one we have up in Bloomington is a two thousand and six. Um, it's around a hundred thousand dollars. So it's way newer than Rescue Twenty-three right now. Uh, the other one we're looking at was two thousand and two. So we're looking late nineties, early two thousands trucks to get in that price range that we're trying to hit, so.
And the actual cost of a new one?
Uh, to replace Rescue Twenty-three with a new truck right now, um, three quarters of a million dollars. Easy. So, and you're gonna wait.
A year.
Been to order trucks three years ago, and they're just gonna get them like next month, so, it's crazy. It's really advantageous, I mean, I don't think it's advantageous for us to buy a new truck anytime soon, so, unless something crazy would happen, but. But should we place that truck? We're getting way newer, more capability, and. I think that's good. Good use of the rest of our budget.
Why is the ones in Bloomington wanting to sell this? Have they bought a new one, or what's their reason for selling it? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, no. I, I haven't, uh, talked to them about that aspect of it, so, I think so. I think they replaced the truck, so.
Bigger department.
The, like, bigger department, yeah, yeah. One of our, uh, so our, our greenhouse mechanic on the apartment, he used to work for a, a fire truck repair company. And, uh, he worked on the truck himself, you know, this mechanic was down with him and stuff like that. We'd have, have all the tests done, and everything performing perfectly, so.
Any thoughts or comments about them staying within their budget to replace Twenty-three?
I know better than you on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we say that'd be the best use of our funds for the, not the rest of them, but the majority of our funds for this year.
Replacing things that are needed.
Yeah, absolutely. We've bought a ton of new equipment for that truck, um, so the equipment's all in really good shape. It's just, you know, the truck needs to be updated at this point, so, and then looking forward, what we're gonna pay for the station and stuff like that. We just know we're not gonna have that opportunity again for a while, so.
So will you sell the, the old one then?
I think so, yeah. I don't think we have any reason to keep it unless, uh, you guys have a need for it. We're not really sure, make a good fire truck anymore, but a, like, service truck for somebody or something like that, it'd make an awesome service truck.
Surplus it out.
Yeah, so you gotta, you know, surplus it out. We market it to the right, right people, if you have heavy equipment companies, so take it out for a service, yeah, I think it'd make an awesome truck for that, so.
Small business?
Yeah, small businesses or whatever, so, it just doesn't, doesn't run real fast. It's kind of slow, it.
What do you think that truck's worth?
Until the right person, maybe ten thousand dollars. I, I'm not more versed in the used heavy truck market, so, but, I, I mean, we got eight thousand dollars for the Jeep we sold in the shop that we, we did that last year, so. I know she's insane to me, that Jeep was worth five hundred bucks in my mind, but, you know, so, it could be twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars.
So trucks are hiring now, yeah, they are.
Yeah.
And need is, like you said, is long at getting things, um, replacing with new.
Yeah.
So that ties up and shortens your re, uh, your used market as well.
Yeah, no, for sure. There's not, I looked a lot in the past week or two, and there's not a lot of used fire trucks out there. Like, they're getting taken out when they can, because people just can't get new ones. So you rent a fire truck or something, you have to go buy a used one until you get a new one.
Indianapolis did that this weekend.
Yeah, yeah, Indianapolis is total on this, so, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So if you guys are okay with that, we're gonna pursue, maybe not that truck, but a truck, and, uh, obviously.
But to me, Vermont sounds unrealistic.
Oh, absolutely. It was just, that truck, the truck for the price is like, that's a good deal, uh, but it's just the logistical challenges again, I hear this. We, the rest too, yeah. We've looked at a couple out of Texas, and they have a big market down there, and that's, but, uh, we can get one two hours away, that's, that's pretty awesome. So.
So, yes, absolutely. So the other thing I'm just gonna say is that last week during the storms, the work that those folks, the folks under your roof down there put in for us and our neighbors to the south was.
Amazing work.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
I went home that night at eleven o'clock, and the doors were still wide open at that, at the fire station. And there was not many people there. There was just man, you know, people on station.
Yeah, they were calling the same lights, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we had, uh, almost every truck we had out down in Newburgh, like, besides one truck, we had every truck we had out in Newburgh Tuesday nights, so, um, yeah, thank you.
A lot of man-hours put in, and very much appreciated.
Thank you. All right, we'll get back to you guys when we, uh.
Okay.
That's a truck, or what we designed, so, thanks.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay, Dr. Public Services.
The only thing I have for you guys tonight is a pay application number ten to the transmission bank for seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. This project is almost seventy percent complete. Um, they've actually moved the timeframe up to the end of October, beginning of November being substantial completion.
Wow.
We did run into a small hiccup with I D M's inspector. Um, there was some confusion, who was supposed to be, um, reviewing the permits and the sub-monitoring reports. He reached out to Michael, Michael got it settled, got our contractors kind of back on track, and, um, Chandler will be handling it from here on out, not the county, even though past history shows that the county's always dealt with.
Things outside of the town limits.
Right, so.
And I will say too, just so you know, that's, that's not a small thing that is now new on Michael's plate, so, just, just know that.
I did come and did meet Michael for actually something else I had to get, and he showed me that book.
Yep.
That he had worked on. That was a lot, and thank you for continuing on and getting that to not slow the project down.
Yep, we appreciate it.
So, um, but a lot of water lines have been laid.
Yes.
So, and you guys have done a great job, and Reynolds has done a good job, because, yes, because this is actually not supposed to be done until next year.
Yep, twenty twenty-five.
Correct. Okay, then, entertain motions to accept this pay application of seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, um, for Reynolds Construction. This is pay application number ten.
So who?
Second.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
The last thing I have is, um, we have a small, small parcel that is off South State Street. It's about one zero one acres. It used to house our old booster station. It hasn't been there for fifteen, twenty years. It's useless to the town. It's too small to even put building on. We, with your blessing, I'd like to offer this to Vince Monday, who property surrounds it, and he's been maintaining it. If you guys give him a blessing, I'll work with Josh on trying to get something for him to.
So how do we have to, you know, handle that? Because it is property we have, but, um, how do we go about that?
Well, we can get together, we'll draft an agreement. I'm happy to, put that in the cup there.
Yes.
Who else?
I mean, we're talking just small things.
He's been maintaining it the whole time, you know, he stops maintaining it, then our.
We have to maintain it.
Go then, move one zero one acre, so.
It's not much.
Yep, that's, that's no, no ring.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, um, Misty is out of town today. She's actually a grant, um, getting certified to write grants, um, in Indianapolis, but she did have some things for us. And to start off with is the park sidewalk estimates. I, um, hope everyone's actually seen them, um, and everything. This is the park sidewalks that, one section of it is the, um, for the community center that will expand, will come from Cherry Street, go down to the bridge, um, put the bridge in to cross over to the community center, so kids don't have to actually get onto Washington, or no one has to get onto Washington. They can come straight from the school, straight down to the community center if they want to. And that is one part of it, and the other one is to complete the sidewalks or walking paths. I think it's a proper term that goes all the way around the park over here, the, on Fourth Street, but then it gives just a couple other. But then it gives just a couple other things that can coincide with that, like a potential of a parking spot. And then, um, there were some additions of some handrails on both, up against the lake and over there for the, uh, bridge on those. There's two, she's worked really hard on this, this is to fulfill the grant that we were awarded, um, from the county. And she has worked so hard on this and there's been so many hiccups on it. And there's two folks that have bid on it. And it just pretty much kind of depends on what we want to do to move forward on this. We do need to move forward on this because obviously we don't want to lose the hundred thousand dollar grant that we received to be able to get this, these things done. And depending which one, our, our, oh, our cost will only be between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. And Brian, do you have areas where we can move the, utilize those spends?
We can always do, uh, I think we're doing a smaller amount of funding, uh, I mean paving, uh, because I'll use, uh.
Local roads? LRS, that's what, I think we talk, okay.
ARP funds also, uh, main issue with point one two ARP funds is, uh, there's a lot that was left in the budget from twenty-three that we could carry over to twenty-four, so we either have to do additional appropriations to spend that money, because it's only like round, maybe twenty thousand dollars in actual budget.
For this year? Okay. Okay, any questions about any of the estimates that's been given? There's an estimate, um, from Elliot's for, um, the Cherry Street project that going across the bridge there of forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight. Another one is from a crane contracting, which is forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. Um, then for Fourth Street, there is an estimate for with, at the lake with no parking but the handrails, um, of sixty-eight thousand six hundred and thirteen. If you add the parking, it makes it seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirteen. And then from Crane, theirs is sixty-six thousand, but they have, uh, don't remember.
I'm looking, I don't see it.
I feel like they have the parking around the lake, but I'm not sure if we want to do the parking around the lake or we don't want to do the parking around the lake.
It's called the parking pad along lake perspective.
Uh-huh, I do know there's some questions and thoughts on, um. I don't know, Michael may know more about Crane to give us some.
We've had some experience with Crane, I, I think Misty noted in her email that there've been some maybe challenges with, uh, another contractor developer, but I think that would be a, um, just a procedural thing, as far as the, the work, uh, I've never heard of anyone complaining about their work. And I've, I've had also experience not just with the developer contractor she mentioned, but, uh, some past experience from my construction days and I can't see anything wrong with the craftsmanship.
Okay. So. Any thoughts or questions on any of these?
Well, I got a question, I think you can answer it. How many parking spots was that gonna be around the lake? I forgot now, what we talked about.
I think in reality she was only playing on two or three spots.
I think it was two.
It would be the parallel along Monroe Street right there on the south side of the park, because there's people that park in the street sometimes and they're in the grass on the street and that was the reason for those parking spaces.
So on one, three, twelve foot, a fourteen foot pad.
Was it three, okay.
Three.
I think it was one or two, but I can't remember.
No, that's what, on this one estimate, that's what it says.
Okay.
Three, twelve foot, a fourteen pad, fourteen foot pad.
And, and she did, when in talking to her, she's like, she's not desperate for those pads. But then, you know, we have the granting process that cover, covers a lot of this project to begin with, it is something that we feel like we want or need.
Well, we can all, you always choose parking.
Right, then there's, you know, without, with it going parallel, it's not gonna take the, um, audience of the lake and the park. I don't think that's the exact word I mean, but.
That parking is nice too, in that area because it goes, it's real close to that bench that's up there.
Right.
Short distance walk to the lake.
Well, and then it's very, would then be very close to the actual walking path, which would make it safe for, um, elderly if they were to use to go around the complete lake, which is some of the ideas that we had to begin with, with the, um, putting that around, when the Lions Club actually started that. So this is actually finishing the project that they started. I don't know, I, I'm perfectly fine with it, I'd like to see us move forward doing it.
I would have a suggestion.
What's your suggestion?
Split them up. Do one estimate for the park and the other company for the, um, for the fourth park and the other company for the, uh, Fourth Street park. That would be low biz.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna say. I don't know Crane, but I do have concerns about it from some things I've seen. But this is for the complete.
Kind of flip run the difference.
Oh, sixty-six and seventy-five.
It makes me concerned on.
I think a concern too, that it was not just craftsmanship, it was a change of prices that maybe caused some concern for Misty. Because originally the price was higher and then came back with a lower price, much lower price, so it was not just a craftsmanship, it was a pricing issue.
I don't know, I mean.
On a situation like that, wouldn't you be inspecting that?
Well, I would be involved in this project because number one, there is some stormwater issues with this project, it's a direct call, color drain, drainage pipe. And, um, as far as inspecting the sidewalks, you know, I'm sure I'd be a part of looking over that. I, the, the, the thing that I am concerned most is that I'd like to have more description of what they're actually gonna do. I, I'd like to see a little more detail as to how they will do it, like for example, what are those handrails gonna look like? And, uh.
Well, okay, so if that's the case, then it's not gonna hurt us for one more meeting to put that off and let's gather that information.
This is pretty broad to say I'm gonna put up forty inch handrails first off, that's pretty tall. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't, I just got this this afternoon, I haven't referenced it with regards to code, so I'm not sure about that. And then also talks about the length of it, but it doesn't spec out what kind of the handrail they are, uh, the manner in which they'll install. I think there's more details, it would be, if I was in your position, I'd wanna know.
Those are the answers that we need from you, so let's pause this for one more meeting and let's make sure we try to get together and get the detail that you're saying as the inspector, that and over stormwater as well as, you know, A D A compliancy and stuff like that, that you would need or you would want to see us have. Okay, so we'll do that. All right, um, and that was, I think, the biggest thing that she really had for us, um. As a, and everything, so, and as I, they, what, I'm sorry?
Buffer.
Buffer. Oh, the buffer, yes, for the parks, uh, I mean for the community center, yes. That was earlier, there is. Thank you.
Is the only thing else I don't install that might be pushing or pressing?
Well. Any thoughts on that? I don't, I don't know how often it's used.
I don't either.
I think we need.
Seems like a lot of money for a buffer.
Well, they're not cheap. And, yeah.
Six thousand dollars.
And the question is, I mean, how often is it actually used? I don't know.
I don't either.
I mean, we could, I don't think it's pressing because the floors were just done last week, so I think that's something we could
Take them.
Take them until next meeting, get more information on, um, as well. Okay.
I do have one little thing.
Yes.
I did, uh, this afternoon, get the specs for the lights.
Yes.
Um, I, I can pass that around tonight so you guys can see what they look like.
Okay.
Um, yeah, he sent them over this afternoon, so.
That would be great, Misty.
That would be, you guys can at least see what it looks like.
And since we're on that sort of stuff, did we ever get any information about changing or what the cost would be to change the small kitty field down there to a dog park?
No.
The fencing, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that fencing information. And then I was contacted, since we're on parks here, so we can just get it on, I was contacted by a gentleman, his last name is Thompson and for the life of me can't think his first name right this minute, who was, and I don't think we're interested in this, but I said I would bring it to council. He is interested in purchasing the bleachers that we have down there at the park. And I didn't think we would necessarily be interested, but I said I would bring it to council, fair enough.
The bleachers over here at the sports park?
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I thought I would bring it up because it was asked. So, okay.
What about on the dog park thing, what about our interest coverage on that?
I know Misty is supposed to be checking on that information as well for Rita.
Because there are some, um, state laws that effectively protect liability for normal parks, the dog parks or different breed.
Right. Fair enough, just getting all that information together to see if it's something that's actually feasible. I know my son's been actually at the one at Friedman when there was a not good situation that happened.
Yeah, that would be, we need good, we need good coverage on that.
Yes, and to see if it's even something that's.
I know about dog parks are a big thing to my son, and I haven't talked about it on the lever, but, I, I mean, that, that unhinges me just a little bit, the liability involved with that.
Yeah, I noticed that she was supposed to talk to Rita about that, to see if it was something that was even going to be, or, we had had that conversation. So I don't know if she has any answer back from that. Fair enough? Environmental manager?
A few people have been asking about the property adjacent to the fire station that has, well, that is for sale. And I finally did hear back this afternoon and I kind of pressed the issue and got, uh, with the architect. And, uh, there is still that retail area that's, uh, on the table, so to speak. Uh, the developer has just had his hands full, everybody's been busy, uh, he has two more developments going in Evansville. So he said with him, probably about a month, maybe you can turn attention to the chairman, so just letting you know, uh, that that is still active and, uh, just taking some time, so kind of bringing up today on that. Uh, and as Tyler's pointed out, we have been spending a lot of time with I D M. Matter of fact, about five P M this evening, got another message, it's just been, uh, uh, more, more work on us, says, uh, again, Josh just pointed out, it had been uh, a great deal of time to deal with, uh, the situation there, but it's, it's under control and everything's cordial and going well. Uh, we, we got it, it's just, uh, a little more of a, a little more for us. A question for you, uh, it's been talked about and I thought maybe, maybe just bring it out in the open this evening. Uh, again, we've talked about it behind the scenes, but, uh, discussion on perhaps turning the old fire station into a street department. When the new department is built, uh, would be great, well, it'd be greatly appreciated, advantageous, we've got equipment that's sitting outside. We've got some things that we're storing over at the old town hall, we have some things over at the, uh, utilities and, uh, there's a big box in, uh, Casey's office right now, so just looking forward to what we could maybe expect or think about. And I know it's gonna be several months out there and in the next year, but what's the council think regarding turning the old fire department into a street department?
I mean, I think with the equipment you have now and the likelihood of receiving more, it's a good place to put it.
And, you know, not asking for a decision now, but just kind of a little consensus of what the, the direction we're heading, kind of puts us at ease. Cause as Cheryl's pointed out, we do need some more equipment and we'd like to have maybe, uh, a, a better, some more mowing equipment as we go forward. It just, you know, four trucks and whatnot as we move forward, so just to have that, uh, gives us a little peace of mind that we have some place to go.
Strong possibility.
I think it is, yeah.
Something we need to look strongly at.
Yeah.
Sure.
And, you know, at some point in time, give us your thoughts and ideas on how you would utilize, would probably be, you know, a good way to start.
Sure.
Okay.
Brian, can you help me?
Just like.
Got some photos that I can share, um. Sorry about this, gotta go down to the right place here. Okay, uh, Kimber's Market has been on our radar, we issued a letter in June and asking them to take care of some things. And that letter was issued about June twenty, um, oh, I'm sorry, June seventeen. And, um, as we have made contact with them, been reaching out to them, saying, you know, what have you done? And I would say that, um, town has mowed the property, I think it was on, the eighteenth of July, we took out some weeds, we mowed some property, I've done some outside work. And in our, uh, talking with them to have access to the inside, found out that on July five, this property has changed ownership, according to the county records. And I did visit in person at the county and the new ownership was recorded on July the eighteenth. So, um, we were notified we could get access to that market and so we basically, uh, took advantage of that on a, almost just a split second notice and got into the market. At that time, uh, Misty was available, she went in, she walked it with us, um, uh, from our utilities, part Tyler helped because I was in Evansville and we were told that we could have access and Tyler helped me to send a couple guys over and Mike and who is his helper? Uh, Aiden, Aiden, uh, so there's four of us that went through the marketplace that day. So just sharing some, uh, things, oops, here we go. I just, uh, have several photos to give you maybe an idea of what it looks like inside right now. There, there's, as you see, some soda, uh, there's a few things, there's a, a cooler, there are some things that are left in the marketplace. I wish Misty was here to help me or Mike, but we saw no, um, rodents or anything alive in that marketplace. It's messy, uh, certainly needs a good cleaning, we had a good conversation with the new owner, he was there and indicated that, and as you see there on the shelf, there's still a few items, there's probably all total in that store. Maybe enough to fill up the bed of a pickup truck that needs to be hauled away, I encourage him to do that. He's purchased the store to reopen, uh, his plans would be hopefully within the next couple of months to open the marketplace back. But just letting you see what is inside and, um, we went from back to front, uh, every room, I think that, uh, I, I have found out it's got a lot more rooms than I thought. Uh, those coolers aren't empty, um. But yeah, it has a.
But yeah, it has a lot of little spaces in this place and we tried to discover them all. Some backroom stuff there. There is no electricity in the building. As far as mold, that question's come up, that's the worst place. And I think that's where there was some refrigeration unit and that's the reason for that mold that's on the floor, black mold. That was the only place that I found any kind of mold. I'm sorry, some of these pictures may be redundant because I was snapping, 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 so. And I think that's the last of the pictures I have of the marketplace.
I, I did talk to Misty this afternoon and she said, even in the corners, that she did not see evidence of pests. So that's not an immediate issue. Just a lot of filth.
Yeah, I, I went through there, I was actually, uh, I'd been downtown to a conference and I was in dressed clothes and walked through the marketplace and it, uh, yeah, it's some good housekeeping, but um nothing that was overbearing.
I did see them there on July twenty-fourth with a U-Haul truck.
Was that before or after you know?
I believe the U-Haul was there before.
That was before you know.
I was wondering if that prompted them to act, or it sounds like they're doing it on their own maybe.
There were some things that went in and there were some things that went out, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure. So, Michael, for clarification, state would have to come in and inspect before they could ever open any the man health department, right?
He's, he per, he says that he purchased the building, which he did. We, we went to the county, followed up with the records, it's in a new name. Whatever name was on it when we sent the letters out, it's a new name now. He stated clearly emphatically that he wants to open it back up as, as a store. And he was asking what that would, what steps would be, need to be taken. I encourage you first off, you know, you're, you're gonna have to have some power turned back on. And to do that, you'll have to have the building inspected. Anytime that power's off for over twelve months, you have to have it re-inspected. And so he'll have to, have to cross some hurdles there with regards to the overall, you know, condition of the mechanicals of the building. So he's got, after that comes onboard, you know, the, the air conditioning, the HVAC system will have to be checked out. He will at one point have to deal with the health department and, you know, Ford County Health Department. So there's some, there's some hurdles there, as you folk all know. So he has a plan, he's bought the store, that's all I can say.
Does he live locally?
He lives in Evansville. He actually was very, very transparent with me. Uh, he gave me his driver's license and was offering all the information. And so I've got, I've got that contact information, he lives in Evansville. I've got his address, phone number.
I mean, don't take me wrong, I, I would love to see a grocery back in our town. We all know, we all feel the same way, we all feel the same way. But there's, there's some mighty big hurdles to make that building.
Absolutely.
To make that building operational.
Absolutely.
It, it just behooves me that there's still products on the shelves. Cheese and biscuits are still there.
And I, I.
And juice and.
I did add, I said, you know, it'd make everybody in this town feel much better to see you take everything completely out of the store that's on these shelves. And I, I did encourage him to do that.
That thought crossed my mind, but I wasn't gonna say it. I, I would hope that every bit of that would go straight to the dumpster.
Absolutely.
But. I've seen them there twice since our last conversation about it.
Well, I hope you see them a lot more if they're gonna open the store or make it happen to go over.
I thought they were there last week, one day when I went past. But I also thought there was electricity on, in there, because there was lights looking in there, so I don't know.
That's why I did, there was no electricity.
Okay, so I don't know if maybe there was, well.
And it's gonna have to have some, the electricity.
But Michael will have to sign off on it before electricity can.
Yes, I have to sign off on it, there's a sticker, has to be put on the box. But for some reason, if you look, the electric has, not just the meter's gone, but it's been cut, the riser.
Well, that's right, that's right, we had that conversation before.
It's been cut at the riser.
The whole hood that it comes down to is.
So he's gonna have to spend money to get it going in maybe ways he doesn't even know yet.
Maybe someone.
They were up on the roof last week.
Really, was that a, okay.
Probably the owners, same people I saw before. I think, just saying this, I think when it comes to the proper time before they ever do anything, I think we need to address the drainage outside, get that fixed before they ever open it up.
The, the drainage is an issue, but I believe the drainage is actually as a result of poorly installed gutters. And they've attempted, somebody has attempted to put gutter guards on, well, not a gutter guard, but a gutter shield to keep it runoff into the gutter. And that property goes over a good distance and then there's a right of way in between. So the neighbor doesn't have three feet outside of his door. So it is an issue, but.
I wonder if that's why they were on the roof? Do you think that's why they were on the roof?
He did, he did confess the fact that they have a, a, a small A, but it is a small A because I saw the tile where it's been stained and there was no evidence on the floor. You all know, we've had a lot of rain, so.
Well, part of that roof was repaired back, back um when the auction happened. I'll say that, about that time here, right before the auction. Part of that roof was repaired by an outside party, had nothing to do with the store or the people. They were hired by somebody else. So some of that was patched and fixed, but was it fixed properly? I don't know.
Well, that's what I go back to this morning.
Okay.
More than we did before.
And on a happy note, this is the nature park. And I just was in a hurry today, sorry the photo's not better, but this one is a little better photo. And are those called?
Light gray.
I like those things, I was hoping we'd get some of that next. So anyway, the nature park is coming to life over there, just letting you know about that. And we need to do some more mowing over there again, the grass is growing fast, as you know. And Casey's been doing his best, he's a lion's play, we've had a lot on play. But there's the nature park, so.
The beginning of it.
The beginning.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, park treasure?
I don't have a business.
I think, is there anything else on parks?
I don't think so.
New business?
Just the lake.
Oh, yeah, when the lake is getting treated, but with the rain and the sun, uh.
Did you talk to Misty about that today?
Hmm, today?
Yes.
We didn't talk about the lake, but we talked about everything else, why?
Well, I don't wanna speak out of school, but I, I think when she contacted the company again today, there had been some kind of a mix-up. So while we thought they'd been spraying, I don't think they've been spraying. And, uh, hey, I don't know anything about that stuff. But I went over there over the weekend, retrieved some basketballs out of the water. They've been floating around there for a few days and they got to a place where I thought I could lash them out of the water and make it look a little better, and I did. But when I did that, it's like, that stuff is super thick.
That's why we had requested to be mo, uh, to be sprayed every other week.
Well, I don't think that's happened.
Well, then we'll have to.
Might wanna come for a look at Misty, but I, that's what she told me this morning. And that stuff is super, super thick. I don't know, spraying, maybe though, I tell you what, I think it, if you spray it, it'll take the rest of the year to clean it up. I just can't.
Well, they had told her that to begin with, that it, you know, it's not just us battling that with the heat and everything, because we don't generally have the type of heat that we had in June.
I, I wish we could just take a boat and a come along and go over and scrape it out.
I know.
Because it's just that, it's just that thick.
You just need a.
It's just that thick.
You know, I wondered too, whenever they shot that lake and took all the fish out there a few years back?
But they, yes, but we, they put some back in that specific.
If you notice, a lot of them fish come out there with the carp, okay? Which I know some of them carp are no good, but some of them are grass carp, okay? And I got a river friend of mine, it's got a big lake, in fact, he just put like hundred fifty in his that really helps keep it like.
So the DNR says the lake outside needs seven.
Said what?
Seven, that's what they, the DNR said, I think it was seven.
So are they in there?
I would assume so, because they, the DNR actually, um, re.
They restocked it.
Restocks the, they restocked the lake and everything, but you need actually less than what you think.
Right, but, but it'd be nice to have the seven in there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Make sure that you.
Yeah, but we had a lot of gar, I think it was, or something, or what was it?
Not gar, it was.
It was, it was some sort of useless fish, shad. Thank you. It was a, and the shad, and then you have the shad and there's, the shad apparently come from people releasing, releasing minnows into the lake. And the more shad you have, the less like you're gonna have your bass or you're gonna have catfish or anything that's worth fishing, because they eat all the stuff up from that, those type of sheets. So apparently, according to the DNR.
Let me check in and see if they are treating it.
Yeah.
But I just know by there this evening, I mean, I have a thing, it's just almost covered now.
I'll check, I'll check with Misty.
Kids can't go down and fish or nothing.
Yeah, with, um, but aquatic control, I mean, I called and talked to my personal staff on, uh, when she was out of town. And they sure did act like they were. Praying it.
I think there was some confusion in their office, according to Misty's. Somebody thought there was, but there really wasn't.
Well, we need to make sure, because we need to make sure we're not being charged for something, we're not getting services rendered.
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, we'll find out about that. Thanks for bringing it up, Michael. All right, um, any other new business? Old business? Okay, presentation of claims, nine hundred sixty, sixty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Any thoughts, questions, or concerns about claims? Okay, then entertain motion to accept the claims of nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
So move.
I'll second.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, and claims passes presented. At this point in time, like to entertain motion to recess until our next scheduled meeting. Make that motion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, have a nice evening.